Follow order.
Director Alaska.
Here.
Director Shirley.
Here.
Director Pete.
Here.
You have a form.
Any public, any public up there?
I should know members of the public.
I want like your officer, but you're the committee chair for twenty twenty three.
I was gonna say, can I move that the O continues a fabulous job as chair of finance.
Yeah, fifty nine minutes, so that was our roll call. Through the data reports, then twenty minutes. All favor of Prudence, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Okay, on budget planning.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start off with a little introduction to budget planning as we prepare for budget planning. We are seeking a little bit guidance around some, some items that we wanna entertain that we start preparing the budget. The first one being. Speaking with our philosophy, really looking at our, our price adjustment at the gate rate level. And is there any subsequent other items that we would wanna address at this time? And one of them would be the C and D material that's coming in. And also probably the green ways we wanna really take a good look at them to make sure that. We're at a point of equity for the rate payer and also preparing our budget and just showing what our revenue streams are. We also have taken a big approach in my first year when we set the budget is to narrow down the gap. And I, I, I believe garden really done a really good job of narrowing down our, our revenue that streams that are coming in. And we're not gonna beat our budget by twenty million. We are beginning to project ourselves to be within plus or minus five percent of our budget targets going into this year. Which is starting to give us real indicators of where we want to address some of the concerns of our operations. And so at this point, we're a little early, but we, we will be looking at a projection number for at least. The gate rate increase pretty soon here as Pebble Beach is the first. Community services district that goes on the tax rule. So knowing that number is pretty critical to their position and getting and preparing their tax rule. And then it leads to everyone else, including Monterey County, I think is second on the list as they start preparing. Their, their fiscal impacts to disposal component. And so last year we proposed a seven percent, but this year I don't have a number yet. And seven percent, when we looked at the scale, Carl Alba, the C had the biggest increase. For residential because they had the highest rate service rate fee that was applied to, which is by eighty cents on, on seven percent. So at this point, we'll look at a few indicators that we know are, are existing. Is the CPI and rate index is probably around four and a half percent at this point. But we also probably wanna take a look at indicators of the inflation cost. What is our equipment increases, what is our fuel increases? So we'll be taking a, an approach on that. As, as a, a big item for introducing our first pass, we'd like to get. Our, our draft in, in April and then really get a final move in May. And with an approval in June and then implementation in July and not fall behind on, on the schedule for doing this. The other item that we have that's on the horizon as well is the position of where are gonna be labor negotiations for. The LSC unit, which is the majority of the number of employees and frontline employees there. And we will be looking at. Probably a living adjustment for them on top of the CPI. And, and really is, is looking at how, how can we bridge the gap of the living adjustment that exists for this area? In comparison to their rate pain, this will help us distinguish a couple of things as we go into the next negotiation is one. The CPI adjustments that, that we gave for the first group, if they exist here and this one would be CPI. The difference in this one is we'll take a quick look at the living adjustments. And this is the only group that is challenged with the living. Living incomes that exist for Monterey County and its region. So we will be taking a good look at that as we prepare. Our budget is where, where are we prepared to take a position on with our union negotiations and the Odyssey Union, which is our biggest unit? And there is disparity, but I also acknowledge that we can't fix it all in one swoop. But I, I think we take a good effort to really look at a living adjustment from coming attachments of CPI for the Odyssey Unit. And then that's, that's what I have currently, and we're starting to work on it. I wouldn't mind hearing from Helen and from Gar on any items.
Could I ask a question? We've been kind of over budget on revenue. Since, since the start of the year. Have you projected on, do you expect that, that trend to continue?
Uh, yeah.
So how much of that over budget could be applied towards some of the things you're talking about?
I, I, I think we will, will have an ability to really look at what, what that. Impacted the reserves that we created last year, how much will go there? And then is there any desire for any additional reserve items that we would have for closing our, our. Post closure so that we could start making those determinations in the budget? So that's a great question. We, we will look at what is the surplus, what is going into, into the reserves? And then we, we will come back with a good number. But I think it's, it's really looking at position from the board of what's really gonna be important for the board in addition to the items that we mean about.
The labor negotiations, they're gonna be going into, you know, the least we could expect is they're gonna be gonna be two. So that's kind of, kind of a given. Is that, is that a big number?
Currently right now, what I'm seeing is that the CPI is, is trending to go down slightly. So from the December to December, it's four point eight days, whereas last time was in April was five percent. So it's kind of trading staying close to that area. However, we're looking at the moderate living wages, we're just showing that you need to have thirty two dollars an hour for just to pay rent. And so we're, we're thinking or discussing about the possibility of doing that. That's the CPI, we have not gone far enough to, to do that.
So all this.
Yeah, keep in mind that this unit is the lowest paying unit we have there, like fifteen, fifteen, twenty per hour or something to that. Starting.
And that's our largest group.
And it is our largest group and they are the workhorse really.
So that, that's kind of giving the real question of that.
Yeah.
Of that group.
Yeah.
You know, what dollar value do their compensation represent? And, and they're thus, you know, give perspective of how much for the increment of increase.
I don't have that number on the top of my mind, but.
You mentioned that last time around, we did a seven percent increase of the, um. Tiffany. And that affected the space of volume or seven percent of what we're paying now. So if you, if you have like Carmel, there are a lot of extra stuff that they throw on her, on her, on her garbage. So therefore their, the dollar amount for them is actually seven percent is a bigger number.
And that was eighty cents a month impact to the Carmel resident.
Oh, the horror.
And, and the other member agencies.
Yeah, Bill, just to explain what they're talking about the timing. Hell beach, we, we pay our tech, we pay our sewer bill, I mean sewer garbage. Is, is taxed on our property taxes. And we pay that once a year, our garden bill, for example, we pay with your, with our property taxes. So in order to get the property tax rolls adjusted as we got earlier, because that's a different process than rather across the scale.
Three, one water wants to put the sewer charges on their tax rules as well.
That's a, it's kind of a difficult process.
Yeah.
You gotta go through.
It would require, it would require. There'll be quite a bit of resistance to that. And see until.
Yeah, so, so you're sort of kind of eyeballing that seven percent number again.
Uh, no, actually I'm not, I'd like to, to dig into the number. So we'll come, come back with an update, you know, last year what we did is we projected a number. And we distributed that number before it got approved in our, in our budget number as. The worst case scenario that we would, would, it was highly unlikely that I would bring a number to the board and the board would say, no, 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 it's not seven percent, it's twelve percent. Likely revert to a lower number, if not that number. And, and we'll request the same thing once we get to a number is, is let us do the, the pen and paper. Work first and we'll come back and give another update and then we can release. What the number hypothetically would be represented on our budget and being brought to the board for.
How about, uh? Every year we always have a bunch of stuff like even equipment we couldn't buy or a capital project we didn't quite get to. Is that a, is that a big number this time around? What do you think there'll be a carryover of capital?
We did, we did have one already purchased, which.
Yeah, that's right.
We had the, the D nine purchase, it was two point one million. We, Jay's working currently now on a capital schedule that will look at all the vehicles that we have and what's in the pipeline and what's projected for this next year. So we'll, we'll come with a capital number as well, a projection on.
We have vendors of the orders we have out there, when do we expect delivery? And it's gonna be right at the end of June too. It's gonna be right at that, cut off paper this year versus next fiscal year. It's gonna be close.
And the other item, when you're bringing up capital, it's gonna be the capital projects list and that's gonna be very important as well. We have quite a few projects that are, are moving down the line. And maybe guy, you wanna speak through a few of those items of what we're moving in projection for capital projects that are coming in. In this next fiscal year, the remaining of this fiscal year.
But, but I think the general trend with heavier vehicle equipment and, and construction projects. Is that there has been an increase in costs in those groups. And the district hasn't been incurring many costs in those groups in the, in the last couple of years. So we're expecting to see. Higher prices and, and thus requesting higher budgets. One of the GM comments for this meeting is that. Model seven project that was phase three, which is in bidding right now, we're, we're expecting. A, a need to, for additional budget for that project. It's the baseline or system for, for the module.
Increase the budget for next year?
Certainly for next year, but in, uh, depend, yeah, it's probably. It may bleed into a little bit to this year, but I, I think it'll primarily affect. You know, the July, August span. In July, August, September, so primarily be in next year's budget. But, or, or, you know, we, we need to identify that before. The board has the opportunity to. Consider the construction bids and, and award a contract.
Last question, the preliminary budget, what's the, what's the timing on that?
Garth? Well, we'll probably be looking at a preliminary budget in April.
Okay. For a question, you mentioned post closure funds. I know we obviously said our, you know, solidified our reserve funds. I, I don't think we started any kind of, started discussion, is that something that?
We may, we, we may wanna entertain it, we're gonna take a look at our, our financials and, and see what it, what it looking like through the crystal ball when we start planning for the next fiscal year. But I would be encouraged that if we have the opportunity to, to start supporting some of these. Future expenses that will incur and starting early with, with smaller portions that we can contribute and still run our operations without having to worry what's being. Pushed to a reserve, I think that we, we will see this come back to the committee here and then take it to the board at some point.
Is there some guideline or standard for when landfill should start planning or something like that? I feel like it's like a kid that's about to go off to college, but they're an infant now, but you have to plan, you know, so.
Your, your hundred and thirty year crystal.
Right.
Yeah.
Fortunately, there's not a, a common standard of that.
That's my question, there is, is there other activities that given a long lifespan of. When do you really start, before you're. Accumulated the fund.
Well, it, it, it varies between. Privately held or even within privately held group of facilities, the, the companies take different approaches. The, my former employer. Voice Management. Starts day one. You know, whether it's day one of their ownership or day one of their. Of the landfill, they, they start accruing, so they're accruing, accruing the entire time. While other, other private and certainly many of the publics, they tend to not be accruing. A mass fast or if at all until later points in time. And so that's kind of, that's what the district's experience has been is that kind of they, they've maintained a pledge of revenues since nineteen sixty five. And there's a small, small amount that's been accumulated in a different account, but it, it's. It is small and, you know, generally it's beneficial to make small incremental deposits over time. As opposed to. Engaging on the liability when it's larger at a later time, because it has more, more cost impacts. At that later time and the, the customers aren't sharing. That, that later expense, you know, in the preceding time. So this is really. One of those areas where it's benefits to have a broad. Base that's contributing to the liability. That was lesser amount for a longer time.
Yeah.
Assuming that inflation rates and value of money stayed relatively the same or. Piques up slowly, but when you're saving or banking twenty twenty three money. For a hundred years out, a hundred years from that, your twenty thousand dollars would be fifteen cents.
Yeah, the. My recollection on. Uh, rates. In the private sector were that these accrual rates typically were less than five dollars at the time. And that, and those, that was generally a combination of closure and post closure, so.
It's, 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 it's what I've seen in several industries is they kind of apply the same way they would do the cap first. On termination liability. So they would do that in conjunction of that. There is a vehicle for the cap person who can bring them to a trust. However, there is no vehicle for the closure and exclusion where your interest in is just fully restricted for that purpose. Whereas if you put it in a trust for the cap person, you cannot pull that money out for anything but cap person.
But could we, to protect ourselves from future inflation, could, could there, is there some kind of a fund, very fund that would. Sort of keep us even with where we were putting away?
That would take an investment management portfolio that we can probably look at. The only deal for the board has right now is really just to restrict the funds. For that specific purpose and that's the reserve that's gonna be coming up as a request to set up the reserve for that.
Sure, we talked about this over the next hundred and thirty years. Yeah. Bill?
I think it's a good idea. I think you alluded to post closure is the closure of the current landfill. And then I think you said after post closure, which would be the creation of new light landfill, so I assume.
Closure is, is just actually inclusion and then the post closures, after the landfill is closed, there's still.
Oh, maintenance of the area for the thirty year. Well, that's a cost that is being incurred, you know. Whether we like it or not, right, is how the current customers and are the current customers paying for that cost? And, and creating a fund in, in which we prepare for that, that expense makes a lot of sense to me. Yeah.
Anything else on that?
Nothing else? I'm just, just add, um, this is something that should have been done. When the landfill first opened, and so it's not something that's so far into the future, you know, we can't even think about it. That's my thought.
Yeah, my, my only comments is the appreciation for the group to have the consideration for some of that liability that exists. That we haven't really focused on in this, not only this committee, but the board has really done a really good job of identifying the importance of that. And so has staff has done a really good job of getting the background that we require to try to make this decision. So as long as we don't impact our in the black by doing these reserves, I think that we should continue to do that. We continue to build the momentum where the gate rate should, the philosophy should be the gate rate is what is our. Our most consistent revenue and it's really difficult to blend in our. Recycle revenue with that number and it stayed constant because the recycle market goes up and down. And as Garth has explained in his, in his reviews monthly is we're not at the same place, but some of the other permanent or. Our more consistent revenue, it, it is basis still consistent there and it actually supersedes the losses of the revenue. But that's, that's our challenge with revenue stream is that we have the, the impulse of the market for recycling revenues. And what's consistent is what really holds all of the glue together for our organizations and its different operations. That recycling revenue contributes when it can, but there's times that it's not. And can we operate on just that gate rate, uh, funding that we get through the gate rate? So those will be considerations we take into the fact that the appreciation goes out to the continued support to make sure that. We're, we're teetering all the, the aspects that we have to do, deal with, which are today's current expenses. Also looking at the projection of the needs of, of this organization and that. There's other items on the list, we need a water solution going into the following year. There's been a lack of a solution for water here that we'll take into consideration into our budgets and our projects. And the other is, you know, land, land assessment. We're at capacity of our land usage and we're, we're trying to use the pieces that are in between. But we, we could really use, if, if land is cheaper now than it will be a hundred years from now. And maybe in the best interest for us to secure that and look at avenues that we can get land. But those discussions need to be carried a little bit further, but there are items that we definitely wanna identify in our budgets. And we may trek to see some of these in through if they're important enough to the group and to the board. Once we can take a, a, a preliminary budget to them. And take a lot of different approaches this year and what is important enough to chase now. And, and really solidify a, a pathway to get those completed, because there's so many projects that are going on. And we really gotta mitigate and choose which ones are the best for our organization and which ones represent our strategic plan for the next eight years. So the appreciation to everybody that's participated in last year's budget and the execution of it. And getting around and being ahead going into this year as well, thank you.
Yeah.
It says, I'm sorry, we're still on item three, three, you're asking, are there any other discussion? Okay, thank you. So, um, I, yeah, I think the, the comment about, I think you started off. A philosophy for the gate rate. And so. And this comes back to me as a, as a district policy as you, what should be the gate rate for the various. Material streams, right? So if there was a, a policy, written policy indicating what should be the, the. The revenue for each material stream. The type of material stream and where it comes from, does it come from inside the district? The members or the outside the district? And I'm just still, obviously, there's a great deal of financial information. It, it's impressive, the pleasure, obviously, I can at this point only scratch the surface of it. But I'm still, I'm still trying to understand, there, there's parts of the organization, the revenue stream is supporting other parts, right? Right, right, if you take all the, each component individually, it's, it's not self-supporting. And so. When you said philosophy, I, I might turn that into a policy that says, okay. You know, the, the district is, you know, would like to recoup, you know, this, this percentage of our revenue. And maybe it's, you know, it would be a gain from the landfill. And, and that will subsidize the operations at the, at the MRF, for example. Or the composting yard. And so on, I, that's, I don't have that information in front of me, I would like to understand that. And I think the policy would allow us to, to discuss how to set. That, you know, for you to, to set the rates for each of these material streams and sources of the.
I think the reality is that the, the revenue streams are, are need based. So each, each type of, of, of material that comes across the gate has a different price tag associated with processing them. So that's what sets the rates, the rate for one thing is maybe different, the other thing because of the time and energy takes the process in. So it's really a, okay, how much money do we need and therefore, and how are we gonna get it? Is, is kind of the question as opposed to having it's fixed on some kind of policy.
Well, what I don't, I mean, you, you said that, that the gate fee or implied that the gate fee is set. Based on the expense of handling that material, right? I haven't seen that, if there's a document that describes that, I, I'd love to see that. I suggested earlier a fee study. And I hadn't seen any fees.
It's changed over time, people got raises in pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Equipment costs more, you know, it's, it's a, it's a floating number.
Sure, sure, I agree, so all you can do is at one point in time. Assess what is the cost of handling a type of material? And then compare that to what the revenue stream is for that material. Obviously, could either be a, a gain for the organization or it could be out of life.
I think that's what they do. They should have seen based upon the project.
I, I guess I haven't seen anything like that.
I, I, I will work my best with Garth and Helen to develop how we've gotten to some of the rate structures. I also seen a document from, I believe, two thousand and seven where the board had the philosophy or the policy implemented. And I'll look for that document, then it, it really shows that they wanted to have a twenty five percent reserve. And they also wanted to have a minimum of a dollar increase at the gate rate, but it doesn't do what you're looking for. It's what exists in the. It's what exists in the existing policy, but we could look to cater something based on how we put the budget this year. Um, but I think to Leo's point, we may see. Us revert to that policy and see some extraordinary changes that may happen in operation that we. May not capture in the policy to be um a one over one every year, i- it's it's not that simple because of the multiple streams. And the different the different operation, but we do look at operations independently in the budget. To see what those expenses are by department and what kind of revenue that department is generating, and then we have departments that have zero revenue generation. Uh, we have HHW, all we do is receive the material and then we have to pay for it to be disposed of property. And they don't create no revenue, the revenue is created at the gate rates, so that expense is dispersed over the gate rate.
Yeah, I guess I haven't seen that, I mean, in the budgets, if you know, here's, you know, administration, here's engineering. Here's HHR, but I hasn't seen the distribution of these uh the expenditures of. Those departments back allocated to what percentage goes to operation of MRF. To to landfill, you know, to the.
I I like to spend a little bit more time uh with the maybe separate of this discussion here, which is. Um, sharing what we 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 review every week, every month that we get our financial distributed, we did the breakdown of that. But we get it when we put our budget together, we don't put it together. Independently and present a budget for operations and a budget for site crew and a budget for HHW, we create the budget, which is the global budget for everyone. With all those inputs being inputted, so we don't distribute every department out. It's available, but we don't distribute it out um every month, but we we do.
I, if you have that information, I appreciate it, and and that would help me with with uh. On the comment about, well, you know, what are the expenses associated with? With uh a one ton of material that goes to landfill or one time that goes to the MRF.
And we currently working on project, Helen, Garth and David and I were mapping all the material, how it flows through the facility. And the end game is to get exactly what you want, what took cost per ton. To process some to landfill, through the MRF, through the transportation, to C and D, so. We'll have that and it'll be updated. I mean, there's a need for it, we need the we the updated costs and that helps us with the budget.
Yeah, I I would suggest that this be part of the budget. Um, discussion as we, you know, a precursor to the budget.
I agree.
And then 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 the all of the board that has the same information and understanding. Simplistically, um, it it the path, uh, historic. Fast practice has been um a global approach um for rate setting. Not uh uh setting a rate for specific activities individually, you know, for that activity is. It's a global rate consideration and, um, you know, simplistically. If you think about how the district began here at the site. In nineteen sixty five, there was a landfill or disposal services. And um that was essentially the activity that was occurring at the time, and so. That was the revenues, you know, essentially a hundred percent of the revenue was from disposal rep, you know, was from the disposal services. And, you know, ninety percent, I'm I'm guessing here, ninety percent of the of the costs or expenses. Were related to to the disposal activity. That has evolved. You know, and over time to have all these different services that exist here today. And, um, the trend has been that the. Disposal revenues are becoming a lesser and lesser. Percentage component of supporting those other services and those other services are, um. You know, gaining revenue, um, that's. Uh, not relying on the the disposal revenue to maintain that service and. It's been an evolution and and it's, you know, that's what the 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 board directed staff to do and. In two thousand and five and led to all those different uh revenue um. Approaches, you know, that uh were developed and implemented, you know, up. You know, since then, and that's discussed high levels.
I think you bring up that uh an excellent point, oh, one thing that I would. Uh, about the amount of landfill has decreased and and the district is more focused on or has. Increased focus on recyclables, so, um, so. If, um, if it's not too much trouble, I know you have the information in the in the five year forecast. I'd like to to see a forecast of the amount of materials. By source and by type of material coming in, and that'll. I don't know if anyone else is interested, but that'll help me understand. Where the district is going in in the future and and it should. If I would expect it would show maybe. Our landfill amounts over the next five years going up, staying the same, are they going down, recyclables going up and going down? We may not charge for, say, green waste. But if the materials coming in are, um, if the if the amount of materials coming in over five years sure does impact. The expenditure line and the recyclables keeps going up and revenue is zero. And then so if you have that, the I know five year forecast is, which is only. Uh, dollars. But if you have that uh information about the the amount of materials. But how many material types do we have at the gateway part? You have twenty different. Rates, maybe there's some way, it's just a a high level. I mean, I would just look at it as I've heard at the board level talked about, you know, landfill disposal, uh, C and D. Um, green waste and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so probably the 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 higher quantity items in the could we we do an aggregate of of.
Yeah.
We have special ways, we have tons of of codes, so. Just realize that that's probably another reason why there's the global approach, because we have so many components when. We see it from a high level, we think trash, green waste.
Yeah.
Recyclable, right, the top, the the big three, we would call them. Um, and and so I I think we could probably capture the big three and say where we're at. And then we could have a component, which is all the other codes just kind of jammed in together, which is. Um, you know, construction and demolition, uh, you have a whole bunch of subset of. Of uh categories that we have in there that represent a stream. Uh, we maybe we don't capture those independently and we just kind of forecast those together.
Yeah, I I think that would be perfect, and the board should only be thinking. The big major categories and lead it to the professionals to handle the rest.
Okay.
And there's, we we gotta move on here, uh, we got fifty five minutes, we gotta be out of here.
You got enough information on the board?
Yes.
All right. Attention letter of basement, MOU with Monterey County.
Hi, thank you, Chair, I can make this pretty short, um, we received a request from the county of Monterey uh for uh. An extension, uh, with an amendment to an existing MOU. Uh, to extend our uh lower abatement uh funds that we are providing the county. Uh, we and as as Slade's Valley Recycles contribute to roadside cleanup. As well as the legal dump sites and making sure those are uh those are cleaned up in the county. And so we are requesting a two-year uh extension to this MOU in the amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars to support contracted services. Um, for Smith and then Wright, that the county, um, that the county, um.
For what year?
For twenty five thousand dollars for the two, uh, excuse me, per year, per year. Uh, we are paying now with the MOU is also for twenty five thousand and and last year they spent the whole twenty five thousand, the previous year they only spent. Uh, twelve thousand.
To your extension, same price.
To your extension, the same price, and this is one of the, one of, I would say, three activities that we do to support a legal dumping or basically. In our area.
No discussion, okay.
Thank you.
Do the right, so I okay to do the right thing.
I'll bring it to the full board, thank you.
That's gonna be an amendment, okay, there's agreement to extend it.
It's a form, it's a formal amendment, I mean, a formal uh agreement.
It's a formal agreement, but it's correct, there's no substantial changes other than the date uh to the actual agreement.
We'll get the formal over to the court unit and you before you guys design.
Yes.
And the county did, I think they did volunteer to put it together.
They're putting it together and their legal is currently reviewed.
So we're gonna put it on the board agenda for this month.
Correct.
Um, the the budget plan and previous items, there's nothing that will be taken with the board. Number five, okay, going feasibility study for the athlete.
Yeah, so, um, that's me, um. This is the uh going feasibility study uh between Monterey One Water and, um. Jen Monterey and, uh. The update is, uh, well, there's, there's a, I mean, the the vision of the project just says. As a reminder, it is a study where, um. We are jointly investigating opportunities. Um, that may exist uh be between the two agencies on. Um, in collaboration.
Covering all three of those, I could. All three, organic waste, byproducts, renewable energy.
Uh, no, they're, uh, they're together in in the vision, they're, um. Uh, subcategories, so to speak, um, but the, you know, the general intent is. Uh, to evaluate um opportunities to improve, um. Efficiency of operations, resilience of operations, sustainability of operations. Um, by considering the highest and best use of of the waste and the waste byproducts that the two agencies have.
Is is it different that they decided by the code uh code digestion?
Uh, they they're interrelated and that, um, represents, uh. One of the challenges in in communicating. Uh, accurately to to the board and to the directors, um, and and to anyone about the project, um. So, um, it's, if there's overall, there's similar topics, um, and I'll I'll present those. To you, um, in in the next presentation, but in general, this is a study. Um, where we're evaluating opportunities, it's, you know, it's. Not building anything, it's not designing anything, it's not permitting anything, it's a study to uh evaluate. Highest and best use of of waste and waste byproducts and, uh, that, uh. That their use can be in generating power, and that's why the, um, the microgrid is. Uh, uh, part of the, part of the discussion.
The people we hired to do the study, they're doing.
They, uh, they, uh, are starting it, yep, they have recently been, um.
Like a half a million bucks, expensive study, right?
It is, and that was a, um, a a reduced scope to get that cost down, so there were elements of the study. That were deferred.
How how far along are they on the study?
Oh, that's, we just finished our, um. Uh, field tours and, um. The uh equipment assessment in in January, so that was kind of the field kickoff. Meeting, uh, December, um, was the initial kickoff meeting.
Remind me, when is the study due?
It's, it's, uh, projecting to July, that's, um. Uh, that's an aggressive schedule, but uh, that's what everyone's working under is try to meet. Meet that schedule.
Any problems about?
Well, it's the the there's challenges around communicating. You know, the desires of each agency.
I mean, and Garth, we're we're co- co-leading the same with the Monterey one, that's what.
Right, um, the, uh, there is a, uh, a coordinator, um. That Gary Darling, uh, who was, um. Uh, is is filling the, and and the interim is filling the role that the director had, the microgrid director. And that, and so he reports to the two general managers. And then to the ad hoc committees. I'm the lead for Regen and, uh, Tamsin McNary, the, uh. AGM for Monterey One Water is their lead, so. Together with the coordinator and and Black and Beach, um, a cons. A consultant we hired as to help represent staff. Though there's, that's the management structure of the consultant. And and GHG is is the consultant.
On a practical basis, you get. Get together and talk or do, everybody works at the vendor or other network?
Uh, we're just just starting off and everyone's been together on meetings, um, and, uh. Yeah, the the initial kickoff meeting, you know, included the GMs and and staff. And then the subsequent meetings are working at staff to to consultant level.
How horrible.
It's, uh, multifaceted, um, and, you know, we we as staff have yet to, I think. Uh, depicted the the intricacies of of the study to the boards, but that is, uh. Uh, an endeavor we we are working on now that we have the consultant on board is to, uh, provide a. Uh, um, a summary with a little more clarity about what all is entailed. In the, um, in in the study, but it's basically, uh, evaluating or organics. And potentially, uh, energy generation from organics. Um, and then, uh. The, um, the microgrid in, um, you know. And energy rely, sustainability, energy reliability, um, uh, you know, being able to function. Without utility power. Which is what the microgrid would represent.
So that is sources and and uses the potential energy?
Right, you it's load prediction, you you know, usage of electricity that. Prediction versus, you know, what generation it will will, um, supply that need. Um, but he, you know, e- even in that topic of microgrid, uh, the study is is evaluating. Just the two facilities as a small version, and then it's gonna be looking outside the two facilities. As a, uh, see what the potential or more localized, um. The microgrid might might mean to the two agencies.
For example.
Um, Ranco or, you know, they have the farming, they have, uh, four deep wells. Um, they they're being interested customer who, um, be interested in a slightly lower.
Um, but we're not going to that outside, you're dealing with this, is the two agencies right now, what they could do.
Yeah, we're doing a study to investigate these possibilities.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, the purpose of that is to be able to describe those possibilities to the board if there's a business case. Or or any one of them. On the, on the grants side, uh, there's the US EPA grant that N one W was awarded. Last year, and that, uh, will be, um, around, uh. Last year, and that, uh, will be, um, around, uh. Or, uh, organics processing in the wastewater treatment plant, so kind of, uh, co-digestion of organics. And feasibility's study scope of work will accomplish a grant. A scope of work, so that's, that's one to one, that grant will be. Completed as part of the feasibility study. Feasibility study is much larger than that grant. But, 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 but be clear that, uh, there is the.
The grant is only covering their part of.
That's correct.
We're paying all of our part.
Um, well, the, the grant funds is paying for the, uh, that part of the study. So, not, not Regen.
What's the cost it does to real money not counting grants and stuff?
Uh, the overall or?
No, yeah, well, the, the, the setting. How much real dollars are we putting in those?
Uh, we're putting in about half, nine dollars.
Four hundred fifty thousand.
We, we are, we know there have been, uh, periodic, uh, meetings of the ad hoc committee. And, and that are, uh, representing the district is Jason, Jerry and Wendy on that ad hoc committee and. And, uh, Peter Bay and, and, uh. Uh, the others have, um, big presentations and Zoom meetings to keep them up to date.
So they're protecting our interest. Good, good.
We also have, um, uh, the, the joint. Study has been awarded some additional hours from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. Um, forty hours of technical review, so we're, you know, that's, that's a. Uh, that. Uh, subject matter expert that's providing, you know, information to the agencies and to the, to the consultants. So that's, uh, helps on reliability of, of information and, and completeness.
The expectation of the complete, after the completion of studying is that. Either us alone or us in conjunction with Monterey One or them alone will do something.
Right, the expectations are there may be need for, uh, uh, a phase two of, of studying certain things. There may be opportunities for one or, one or the other agency to pursue a project immediately. And there may be, uh, information, uh, of an opportunity where the two together pursue. Uh, a project, so those, those are, uh, definitely foreseeable.
We've been talking about micro grid for a long time, but that makes a lot of sense for here, maybe it's gonna be. Enjoyed in some way, anyway. Initially, I thought it was just a, a technical problem, I, I wired two organizations together in a meaningful way. But we, I think we're going beyond that, um, kind of the pieces of scope of that. There's something more than, than just hooking us together.
Potentially, that, that's, that's the study aspect, is if there's a. Uh, an opportunity or a larger microgrid as an example. That includes D cell for Cal AM, should that ever be present next door. Or, um, development by Marina Coast Water District, um, on the other side of our property. And, uh, serving, uh, a, a neighbor like, uh, Ranco or possibly Dole. If that's a local microgrid and there are benefits. To having those partners in, in a microgrid. Um, for the two agencies, then, uh, you, staff felt that. The board ought to know about those opportunities because that's distributing. Cost to, to multiple parties. Uh, we, you know, and that will reduce the agency's, you know, u- unit rate of cost.
Right now, you have no, uh, no reason to believe there's any problems associated with conducting a study going on. Well, it could be.
Yeah, the, the technical aspects are, you know, are. Pretty straightforward, it's the, it's the partnership. You know, it's the human factor that, uh, around, around. People collaborating that, using present work.
How long do you think it's gonna be before we have useful information coming from the study that we'll be able to share with the other board?
Think we'll have some preliminary.
July, I'm saying July, August timeframe is, we'll, we'll see the result, and it's, it's an aggressive.
It's a combo, it's a.
Yeah, but it, we've been really aggressive, we're meeting on a weekly in technical aspects. Uh, we had to kick off, we had, uh, the, the whole crew of engineers here walking the facility, doing the site tour, they did the same thing at Monterey One Water. So now there are, are starting to see the infrastructures that exist at both agencies. That they can start really complaining, you know, their feasibility aspect of it, so. This, this, this is just an update, uh, with information that we're working through, we're expecting, uh, results in July and August. To Guy's point, we may need to see more, a second study around items that may be of interest us. Because of the business case that's developed. Um, and we may also see a direct injection where we feel like, hey, do we need to start a design and build? Uh, phase of any of those aspects that we can take it at that time, but until we see it, we, we don't know what it is. Um, you know, we, we talk about microgrid and connecting it at the joint. We're already in, in an agreement, um, when I entered in, um. Into this agency, um, you guys already had, uh, approved the medium voltage transmission line to the purification plant. Um, so that is, uh, I wanna say it's a ten year agreement. Uh, to provide electrical, electricity over to Monterey One Water, so that. That is already a step that we're endeavoring in a microgrid process in advance to feasibility. Feasibility, what it's gonna do is gonna really say, um, that is the best. Um, approach that you can use for that energy, or it's gonna say, you know, you could have, uh, had a different pathway to do something else. That may create a better interest for the organization. Um, but I think it's really important that we capture these projects independently along the way because. We don't wanna create a confusion of what projects are existing and will come online. Versus what we could expect from feasibility as well, feasibility is a concept. But it's kind of a concept that's been proven through the history that we've kind of seen that, why shouldn't it work? We're just trying to see, are those the best scenarios that will work for us? Before we start building a.
This slide will, will help elaborate the, the. The interrelationships, um, among other, other topics. Or of, of the topics, but if you remember at last, uh, board meeting. Jason, I think, made a comment that he doesn't, he, he, he was troubled by the name feasibility study. Was, and this is what we're calling, this is a feasibility study, because he believes that these things are feasible. He's, he's right, tech, there's technical solutions, um, that are feasible. Whether those are worthy business cases is, we don't know. And that's what we're trying to do is investigate these options to develop, um. Meaningful, uh, recommendations or business cases to, and, and prove. Uh, the operations and, and reliability and sustainability of, of one or both agencies. So that, that's the study, um, and the study should be differentiated from projects. Um, projects are real, uh, they need to be designed, they need to be permitted, they need to be constructed. And, uh, to Clayface's point, which is the last bullet on this slide, is that, you know. We have an existing project, um, uh, to connect. Um, our gen- generated power to one of the M one W's facilities, the AWPF. That the board approved their construction contract, um, to Anderson's Pacific for that. And, uh, more recently approved, uh, some design modifications, so we can make that, uh, design. Have microgrid functionality, so. That project's on, on a trajectory to deliver a small microgrid. To the two agencies. The study is still gonna study microgrids. It, it's gonna study the expansion of that connection. To the other two facilities that M one W has. Adam, that would represent the, the small microgrid option. But they're gonna look at a larger, um, microgrid option in addition to that, but that's under a study. Not under a, a design or commitment to do. Um, we're committed to make this connection and, um, uh, we're modifying it to. Uh, include, uh. Functionality to be able to island operate by itself, should the utility. Um, not deliver power and, um, you know, we have excess power. That will have to turn off if, if the, an island mode is, is needed. Because the, right now, that excess power goes to the utility, and when the utility opens up. There goes the demand, you have to, you have to drop generation to match the demand. And, uh, the, the man will only. Right, right, and so by, but by making the connection. In this project, our power is going to that facility first, and we're being paid, uh, three peanuts. Instead of one. Um, also, you know, this is a related activities, um, slide. Um, related to the study, the board last month, uh, approved. Uh, the general terms for the biochar pilot study. It's, um, you know, that, but that pilot study is gonna happen here, um. You know, if, if, if an agreement is approved, um, and, and that information will be gathered here separately. That information will be provided to this study consultant, and they're studying biochar. Or the purposes that, uh, align with the pilot study as well as, um, or, uh, treating bio cells. And so, um, one of the, uh. I think benefits of adopting the SITUS group pilot study is. We get site-specific information that, you know, um, i- is. Site specifically reliable, and we can cross-reference to, um, how the consultants are evaluating. The opportunity and see if there's, uh, alignment or if there's some challenges that exist between the two data sets. There's a, uh. M one W, uh, received, um, an award of a calorie cycle co-digestion grant. Which is the next agenda item. But that, that, uh, I can, uh, jump right off of this, uh, if you'd like.
Yeah, well, before we do that, on the study, any, any questions?
I've, uh, been impressed for some time on openness of the district to, um. Evaluate and embrace new technology and to change as. And adapt to availability of new technology implemented, so this is a good, good feasibility study.
Okay. Now you're doing number six.
Hmm, okay, great.
Hey, you don't want me to start this one?
No, it's okay, uh. There'll be a point here to jump in. Kind of the setup, alright. Again, there's, that's the, the vision of the, um. What's it called, the microgrid, but it's, you know, it's. That it's inclusive of organics, evaluation of organics to energy, processing organics. The district has organics in the form of food waste, uh, yard waste. Uh, the food waste is, is in the trash, it's also collected separately, that's of certain commercial. Um, locations. Monterey One Water has, um. Uh, organics in the liquids that come to, uh, their plant. Um, and so, uh, they, they process those, those are relatively small, um. Uh, percent solids. Um, when you, when you. Uh, begin to talk about, uh, food waste, you're talking, we're talking about a, a solids loading of, of that type of treatment process. Um, quick history, uh, the feasibility study is, uh. You know, Regen staff presented it to Regen Board back in two thousand eighteen, got the thumbs up to pursue, um. Pursue it with M one W. That, uh, really, uh, came to fruition in twenty twenty one. Uh, when M, M, M one W, I think, made commitments to, to join and, uh. They joined that, our committee was formed in November of twenty twenty one. And, um, uh, approved, uh, an eighteen month study, uh, for the feasibility study. And, uh, hiring a, a study director and, uh, issuing a. Request for qualifications, request for proposals. The boards approved that, both boards approved that in January twenty twenty two. The study director was onboarded in May of twenty twenty two. The RFP was issued in June of twenty two, twenty twenty two. And, uh, same, at the same time, um. There was a solicitation from Cal Recycle on co-digestion that, uh, brought the two staffs together. In September of twenty twenty two is when the boards, uh, approved the selection of GHG as the consultant. Um, by December, they were under contract and we had our kickoff meeting. And, um, we did the field kickoff meetings and, uh, equipment assessment last night. Well, this is the study, and this is what, yeah, this is what we're looking for, having information to the boards by July.
This is the last title, this is the last title, so he's leading up to how we get to, I guess, and they're, they're. That's why I said it's really important, like, uh, the study, the projects, it, it. Cause there's so many of them and they're all kind of inter, intertwined, or we, or we're gonna receive that feasibility study. Um, and I think you, you setting up the scenario of where does co-digestion fall in? The feasibility, and then I have some outline, uh, items of disclosure that I wanna share along the way that. Will help us make a decision on whether we wanna pursue this opportunity in co-digestion or not.
Yeah, so if your opinion that co-digestion might be. Something that might come to fruition more earlier than some of this other stuff?
A- absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that's why it's being brought, that, that, it, it's co-digestion, both the. Um, well, the wet. Uh, digest, digestion in a wastewater treatment plant. The die, dry digestion in an anaerobic digester or, uh, other similar methods. Has, has always been part of the study, the vision of the study would evaluate those different options. What has occurred is that this Cal Recycle opportunity, um. Uh, for co-digestion, uh, the wet method at, uh, wastewater treatment plant came, uh, up. For funding in, in June of this year. And, um. The, uh, agencies, both agencies have interest in securing funding. Um, the, and so, uh. Uh, we met around, um. That grant, uh, Cal Recycle Co-Digestion Grant or Wet Digestion. And, uh, started to jointly evaluate it, so, you know, the, the initial questions were, is it a single application? Uh, single agency or joint agency? And it was, you know, quickly identified as a, a single agency, uh, submission. And, uh, the scope of the grant is, uh, uh, focused on wastewater treatment plants for expanding their. And uh, the scope of the grant is uh uh focused on wastewater treatment plants for expanding their capacity. Of um. Uh solids, uh, treatment of the, you know, organic solids, so uh that the. Those organics that aren't going to to Atlanta. Um, and so M one W contracted with a a grant writer and had a series of calls. In preparing that application. And uh, I I attended a a a number of those calls. And um, you know, we staff discussed. Their uh through the grant. And so um, the uh. And the part of the discussions are around using food waste. And uh, we also identify the possible future condition of having um organic finds. If if MSW was processed in the MUR. That that material might be available for um, or a co-digestion approach, so. Oh, oh, Regen identified. Is for food waste and MSW finds. We disclosed that um, those were foreseeable possibilities, but they're. Um, they were dependent on the results of the feasibility study. Cause the feasibility study is evaluating not one option, but multiple options is. To identify uh a preferred approach. Uh, that the it has the most benefits to uh one or both of the agencies.
Good question, any of this study involve our current um. Um, our current contractor that deal with our own greenways? In terms of what they might be have do differently in the future?
Well, um. Indirectly, this, that's defining who does the work comes after defining if the work gets done. Um, the composters certainly handling food waste and that food waste was identified as a possible. Um, uh, material that could be used for a a a wet digester approach. So, you know. The composters potentially gonna lose control of of that material. If they're not part of the, of a pre-processing solution that would be necessary to convert. These organics to a slurry. Anyway, um. M one W is receiving the grant. They're looking for uh accelerating the decision around um. You know, a a digestion method. You know, that the feasibility study was tasked with. And um. So that, that's where we presented with today is a a request to accelerate. Uh, an evaluation about co-digestion, the wet version. And uh. Uh, you know, advance that for an earlier decision by the boards.
So, oh. You're thinking about pulling this one out of the mix of the other two studies being done and advances somewhat quickly, is that what you're?
Well, the they ask is there that there be a an early decision made about this and um. Basically foreclose on making an evaluation of the other options.
That information to make that decision be available in July?
Oh, uh, if it continued, we're being asked to evaluate this in um, in the next month or two.
Or pull it out of the mix and concentrate on this one?
So, uh, I'll I'll, I think this is.
This is where the communication um between the the two parties hasn't been ideal.
Yeah, so so thank you for the back background on that guy, I appreciate it. Um, so where we're at now is, do we want? And and here's where some of the disclosures come out, I think they're very important. I'm sorry, I keep looking at my phone, but I have a drawing on a whiteboard that me and Paul Stewart are on. Uh, to try to kind of depict what we're at, so. Um, so you've heard a lot about GHD and feasibility, you know, you have co-digestion. And so, you know, the disclosure that I wanna make evident and that I wanna make evident, not only with with. Our group, finance group and our board, but also with ad hoc. And so, um, you've heard Monterey One Water, they they received a grant and they had a grant opportunity. It is roughly about four point one million dollars of of grant funding and assets that they received. And they did that, um, knowingly that potentially, um. You know, we we don't have a a set pathway yet and we were really gonna rely on feasibility to give us that pathway. But there's four million reasons why Monterey One Water would wanna accelerate this. And that is one enhanced current digester system that they have now, it's it's very dated. It's uh, you know, it's outdated, it'd be a future expense that they can mitigate in cost and liability and. Uh, you know, repairs and and maintenance. Uh, and get this replaced through through a grant opportunity, thus putting them with a project. And leaving us without a project and um, and and. For for us to consider is the disclosures before we make a decision on moving forward with the project was very important for me. Um, and and that disclosure is. Until the board approves us to entertain bypassing feasibility. Um, it's been difficult for us to to um pallet some of the information requests that Monterey One Water has asked without. Misleading them uh in in the forfeiture of, we we are participating in this grant opportunity at this point. We haven't got approval from the board, that's disclosure number one. Two is, is this a pathway we want to seek? And and the reason why I ask that is. We've we've spent about nine hundred thousand dollars uh forward on. This feasibility with all in e- expenses and the feasibility project. Between the two agencies, roughly about four hundred fifty dollar each. So, there's a couple items that will happen is co-digestion will run past feasibility. And then we will um be in a in a project with Monterey One Water. They got four point one million dollars for um, the receiving end of the material. We would then pursue grant opportunity for. Getting the material ready to deliver to those digestors, a delivering system that would be. Uh, probably a debagger um, creating a slurry from the material that would be fed into the digestive gal, creating. Better gases for for energy production for for their facility. Um, un- unlike the pilot program we have for CTOs, we don't have. An early pivot point of one year, we we are definitely now um, will be. Um, at at the realm of the recycling uh Cal grand requirements and that is. Providing the feedstock, um, you know, capturing measurements and capturing data throughout that process until those requirements fall off. And roughly, it's probably uh twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six period time, so that means that we would be in this project. For that duration of time, can back out, can take out material. Uh, we we can't seek the bypass of of the feasibility at that time, but our pivot point would come. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, roughly versus like. Uh, the CTOs that come for one year and then we have a decision whether we wanna pursue or not pursue. We would, we we would like to have zero to no investment in participation on the project that's applying for Cal grant. Getting a receiving station approved for this. Um, so that that is one of the disclosures is that our pivot point does not come readily. At any time that we want, we would have to give uh the requirements of the grant. Uh, the other one.
That another way, we have to be making a business case decision. Now, yeah, uh, or a wet co-digestion process. That's what's, that's what they ask is, is to um, close the door on on the choices of. Of uh digestion, whether it be dry or wet.
So pivot point will come in twenty twenty five, the other item that we identified is the grant application. Asked for about thirty thousand tons of this organic material and and it needs to be food waste, it can't be clean organics, cause it doesn't make. The slurry component that's required of the digester to create good gases.
Right, but it's it's important that the details are, ten thousand tons of food waste. As well as identified, because we we have about eight thousand tons and projected that program will grow. That was the basis for. The grant, the other twenty thousand tons was forecasted to be an MSW finds. Uh, that would result after processing waste across the recycling facility. The um, those were the two items uh identified. And there are risks associated with those two items that we're also disclosed. The the food waste tons are not new tons, so if. If the grant requires new diversion, they're not, it's not gonna be accomplished by the tons that the district's already been recycling. The um, MUR finds, the MSW finds, is from a process that the the the. Uh, district hasn't made a decision on even doing. And.
So, so thank you for that, guy, but the disclosure is we have about nine thousand tons, eight thousand tons of food waste that we could. Participate in the grant with, but it wouldn't meet the full requirement, the agency would have to go out. The requirement, whether if it's new tons or not, would have to be deemed by Cal Recycle, neither agency can make that determination whether. It's new tons or not. It could be considered from the other agency that its new tons received to them. Not new tons from us, but the determination really gonna come from Cal Recycle, but that's just the disclosure saying. If we participate here, some of the challenges that we made based along the way. In receiving grant funding money and if we don't meet qualification, we wind up having to pay for those systems. Out of our pocket, because the grant um will not pay out on items that are not meeting the qualifications of the grant. The 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 few remaining items I have is. Um, there was also a sole sole source negotiation from Monterey One Water with. Energy area and energy area for the assets that would come on, it wasn't a open bid solicitation. Uh, or a public bid solicitation, they felt they had the opportunity with the grant, so the sole source. Um, energy area to be their third party for equipment uh to come in as part of that grant. So, so those are the disclosures that I have, and if I missed anything, um. The the final one I have is when we get the results from feasibility, they may not align with the pathway that we choose. Um, so, you know, the result will be put on standby, we may get a different result. But this is the, you know, the request that I thought that was important to bring, because I don't want it to be the perception that we're not. Um, moving as fast as we can to interpret their request for us to become a partner in co-digestion. Um, but it's been a a probably a two-month period of us. Giving position that feasibility had been approved, it's been a pathway that we want to follow. Unless it's identified and our first opportunity to put these disclosures is here at this finance committee. And then we'll put these same disclosures at the board for us to make a decision, so at this point. Yeah, decision to participate in co-digestion and abandon feasibility for co-digestion. That that's, that's, that's pretty much the 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 request that we're having.
For the other study.
Correct.
Well, but it 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 might re- it might reduce some of the study efforts, so the cost may come down in the study. But it's, it's basically trying to advance the decision around how to handle organics. Or or that it be in a wet digestion uh uh approach or a dry digestion approach. Um, and and it's, you know, what. What they ask is because it from M one W is because they have the grant, they'd like this decision made. So they they can give direction on where the, if their grant might go. Knowing whether Regen's involved or Regen's not involved. And, you know, for Regen to be involved, there needs to be a pre-processing station. Um, to create that organic slurry and, you know, there's probably a four or five million dollar project there. Um, that's not part of this six million dollar project that's happening next door. For which M one W is receiving four million dollars in in grant funds.
So, when they applied for the grant in June of twenty twenty two, did it essentially commit us to? That are that portion that supports their grant? And so that's my first question, the second question is, what if we say? Well, no, we wanna wait until our feasibility study's done to see if this is gonna work for us. What did that do to them?
So, um, the uh disclosures uh made to M one W during the grant. Project was that there were no commitments, that the decision was subject to the feasibility study results. Um, that's been consistent since this feasibility vision was created in two thousand eighteen. Is that the study defines the outcomes. Uh, nonetheless, uh, and, you know, the disclosure about new tons, whether they were considered new tons or not. And the disclosure that the fines are from a process that the district hasn't uh made a business decision to do. Those were all disclosures to M one W in the grant project, they deliberated. Um, um, the information they were provided and among their own interests. And their own interests were overriding. Um, and for for expanding the capacity, that expanding the capacity of that plant. Um, you know, delivers them new equipment, which is if the plant's ready for. And uh it is the the primary goal of the grant is to expand capacity. Um, as far as a commitment, you know, that the tonnage. Um, the scenario that tonnage was available next door was conveyed in the grant, it wasn't conveyed as a commitment. But it can, could be interpreted as uh being part of their plan. Uh, so, uh, that, if if it's not part of their plan, it puts risk. You know, the same risk is why we had the disclosure, it puts risk on whether they the grant. Uh, um, can be supported, whether the issuing agency wills wills uh accept. Accomplishing the project but not having uh the waste to go into it.
So they do depend on us?
The 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 decision we make here will render whether they accept that grant opportunity or not. They may have to render it back if we take a position not to support and we.
What is the action, what is?
We we have to make the determination to be participate and abandon feasibility of result and cut that cost out of our feasibility. Or we'd be planning to be a joint partner in the co-digestion project, so those are gonna be the two options. And and you'd be recommending the the former as opposed to the latter? I I am really seeking your guys' feedback on this, this is definitely a position that we've been strong on. Uh, we definitely have um other opportunities with Monterey One Water, man, being one of our water solution being another. In in endeavor really tracks on. What what is, what is that result? And then there's a risk to it of. Do we meet the qualifications of the grant? I think is is probably the the biggest risk that we have is, if we don't meet it, then what? Then we've used too many dollars to put up a five million dollar um recovery. Process, right? Because grant's not gonna cover the full cost, it will cover portions of it, we're looking for. Full coverage, but we we haven't applied for a grant, we haven't received it yet. Acknowledgement moves in is now we have to, you know, put staff efforts around the grant. And applying with the grant on our end and then continuing discussion between the two agencies.
It's like we need to get some important information.
Yeah.
Before we make a decision.
Yeah, yeah, we.
We probably. Looking back, you know, have we just concentrated on this part of it? And not the other stuff, we might be farther ahead at this point, but.
Well, we we can definitely do a little bit of homework around the receiving station, full cost grants. Um, but I think at the end of the day, it's those big disclosures that I mentioned, one is bypassing ability and abandon. And cut out costs there, um, pivot point doesn't happen immediately, would happen, you know, post twenty twenty five. Feedstock volume is not what is expected with, which is was written into the grant thirty thousand ton, we have about. Feedstock volume is not what is expected with, which is was written into the grant, thirty thousand tons, we have about eight thousand tons. I am not interested in trying to run uh municipal solid waste through the recycling plant. We receive about twenty five hundred tons a day through solid waste. That then possibly about three hundred to four hundred tons a day. So there's no way we can keep up that volume and then transition of shift, so we're absorbing a bunch of costs. To me, the need that's not a need of of the district at this point. Um, but the fulfillment of it is very intriguing if. If we can make it work, what are the results and what is the benefit and? It it this, it is gonna require efforts from Keith Day as well, because he's the existing person that's receiving it and processing the material. Where this is doing for standing of that. Um, and what is their residual, if it's difficult to process, food waste can create slurry that goes into a digest. So there's gain, but there's also the negative impact of risk to to try to enter this a little bit early in the game without knowing the results.
So it's not, this isn't an obvious um pathway that you would have come up with.
I think it's a, I, we we have a couple other agencies.
That was purpose in the study.
No, that, I know, I know the study, I know the study's gonna give us some information, but just like your gut. You know, would you, would you, is this a direction that you'd say like, well, of course we should go in this direction?
Yeah, guys, probably the more, the more on is in your side of 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 what the gut's saying, I I, what I'm seeing is that. You do see other agencies are are already trying to figure this pathway out with wet and dry digestion. Um, so the equipment and and all that, I think is 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 pretty solid of of words that. I don't have enough experience around projects to say, I can say this, I'm really.
Where the industry is going.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of unknown out there. Got any final comments before we wrap up this item?
It's definitely is an item and I I will try to gather more information that we can add to the disclosures. So that we can make a better decision uh at the time of both of discussion.
We'll get, we'll get more information. Yes.
So, and yes, so it sounds like you're asking the board to make a decision. Right?
Yes.
And so I I said it was great conversation, not sure I'm able to process all the different comments that. Um, uh, would love to see a list of pros and cons. For each option, I'm assuming you're.
Actually, I have two pathways, maybe three.
Just pros and cons of the bullet point would help me align.
And then I'll try to get to the point where I can give a strong recommendation on on one or the other. Yes, I do have a general, general manager at the table too. Um, we do have the invitation for module seven, uh the base pre-excavation and liner that guy talked about. Um, we received the bids of his patients uh on Monday, February twenty seventh of twenty twenty three. Uh, so we're, we're excited that it's here, it's coming. And we get uh ready to prepare another module. The next item I have is a recognition for employee donations, the donations that uh that we've been talking about, they're gathered together. Um, we were contacted by uh interim, it was one of the charitable organizations that we that receive funds from the contributions that the employees gathered. And then they were contacted by interim um that they are building an apartment complex uh for adults with mental disabilities and support independently on national deficiency. Uh, this is a great honor uh that we're getting from them and we are now gonna get a. A message on a plaque at that facility that's being built and the message uh that the social committee um solicited from employees. And was finally chosen was to um inscribe on that um. Donor plaque or plaque is to, some people live for a beautiful place, others make a beautiful place and that's from Azran Khan. And that's gonna be the representation of our employees in the region of Monterey at that facility, so I thought it was something of great interest to share that it's. Already gonna be utilized for the construction of the facility. Um, the third item I have is edible food recovery thank you letters from the Salvation Army. Uh, there were recipients of edible food recovery efforts. Um, and we received three letters, they received three contributions from the member agencies. Um, and and I thought it's it's a great importance to see the contributions, the difficult time you mentioned that. Uh, during the hardships and the disasters and the sickness and the doubtlessness and the obligation. Uh, the contribution couldn't uh come at a better time, so I do wanted to acknowledge um the accolades that came from the Salvation Army letters that we received. Um, the final I had, item I have is we're working on a landfill trial uh workshop. And we are gonna, there's some members that will stay on a five A schedule. Uh, but to um. Resolve some of the issues that we were seeing in the operation, we we are gonna offer a four ten ship. To the second ship on the heavy equipment operators that we have in these systems, so. Uh, some of the reason behind it is provide better coverage for Saturdays and have enough ATOs to cover a Saturday work. Uh, it'll expand the ATO bandwidth by adding two hours of ship. Uh, for landfill maintenance work and project work, which we desperately need now is, we need some flexibility in in. Not only performing uh landfilling operations, but everything that requires the maintenance of the landfill itself. Um, we'll look at reducing overtime uh by making these changes here. And then we will su- support a better work-life balance for some of the employees that are not getting two days off in a row. Uh, now, they get a Sunday and a Wednesday or a Sunday and Tuesday. Um, we we can make that adjustment and really get everybody to have a at least two days off, uh consecutive days. Uh, the trial period will be for about six to twelve months and we identify to the union. And it's to give us a good opportunity as well, we don't see the outcomes that we're looking for by making this change. Uh, we can revert back to the is and schedules that we have. And that's all I have to do. Well, yes, we do.
Core of there, okay.
The the session is at the item listed on the agenda and we'll have to excuse anybody who's not. Uh, appropriate for that call session and before we conclude that.
So the the committee came back from its open session at um ten forty three. Uh, having taken up the agenda item as listed, there was a brief discussion of the matter, no reportable action was taken. Thank you. There'd be no further action, then the meeting was adjourned.